Thank you.
No.
Oh, okay.
What's going on?
How are you?
Good. It's extra that, uh, document.
Yeah, okay. It helped me understand what we had.
Yeah, where like the idea where things are?
Yeah.
So I think like that meeting, the guy, it's all he does. He actually got to see it. We're gonna be meeting Monday.
Um, so another, we do that? Is it really gonna be four hours long?
No, I put that there for his purposes. If he's gonna take us on some dates. I figure what we'll do is we'll meet down there just for the initial have conversations. Talk about what we envision, you know, just some ideas. He's gonna read it to us. He's done twelve courses and he used to be part of professional disco association and sit on the board, all this stuff. So the guy's legit. So I think what we'll do is we'll just let him go with us. Let us take it as big or as little as we want and you know, we either go with nine. He said eighteen and a half.
Might be an option.
If nine turns out well to be where I'm working with. But what I didn't look at.
I can do something.
Uh, was that idea of expansion back into the country?
I know.
Give people a little walk and then they get some of these like.
He doesn't have a city manager that needs it all the time.
He said for, I asked him about that and he goes, honestly, the term thing is not.
Honestly, I haven't even started.
If you were looking at just a recreation.
Maybe I'm right.
People would come out and try to close us. He said, my team, you're not, you're not involved in this such to get that potentially. Now, long term, if you see.
You know, I'm gonna have to do a city hall, so.
Maybe we create nine more and then retire. So, but it, we can, you can discuss it. We can run it on Tuesday.
Can I let Jen Levenski or?
Yeah, if you want her to go too, we can invite her.
Okay. All right. Can I let her know that we had a meeting? She was actually.
Before I heard it.
Perfect. Yeah, that'd be great. And he agrees with the concrete pads. And I told him about your church one, maybe your assistant. He was, hey, that's all you guys. Once we give you a show call.
Yeah, okay.
That's on you. So no, it'll be, you'll, you'll really enjoy it. Really nice guy.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank God. We got enough. Tony, Tony, Harvey said he's gonna be quick.
I, we, we, we're averaging thirty-five minutes since I've been here.
Forty-five?
I think so.
Forty-five?
So I was, I felt safe on that earlier. That was kinda where I landed. So.
Forty-five.
You know what? I'll be, I'll do this. I'll look at the room and be like, yeah, it's about forty-five. It's all, it's all, Dan doesn't seem too fired up tonight, so.
Oop, there's nothing on there.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, it was, it's a two factor. It's a two factor thing. What's on it? How many do you show them? All right, you ready? I, I don't know. Know me or else. All right, you ready? Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending this meeting. It's a regular meeting of the City Commission for Buchanan, Monday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we do not have any recognition. If you guys could, everybody can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Giantski?
Yeah.
Money, Swam?
Here.
George.
Yes.
You have a form.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll still move.
Do we have a second?
I'll support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. Uh, at this time, we will take public comment for non, or for agenda items only. My apologies. Uh, please limit your comments to three minutes and approach the podium and state your name for the record.
All ready, Norma.
Norma, we get it out of the way at the beginning. Let's go. We're ready. I don't know. Well, we're gonna give it a good shot.
Norma Feretz, three zero four North Oak. I would like a definition regarding this ordinance fire prevention and protection. Is that for city? Is that for everyone? Are we talking about California?
No. Well, we, we would have changed that ordinance. I can tell you that. Thanks, Norma. Okay. Seeing nobody approaching the podium. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll still. I'll still move.
Swam supports?
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on to. Move on to schedule matters from the floor. Rate analysis and downtown project funding update. Andy Campbell will be presenting. Welcome, Andy.
Long time no see. Good to see you all again and the new member. All right. Is this, is this on? Does it need to be on? I don't know if you want it for recording or?
No, it should be.
Okay, all right.
Okay, just talk loud.
All right. You have this in your packets, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, um, Andy Campbell, now with Ben Zinski and Company, if you recall, uh, we've worked with the city for a number of years now. Uh, my team moved to a different company in July, so we're doing the same stuff. Brittany moved with me from the previous company. Um, still doing bonds and rates, same exact stuff as before, just with a different letterhead. So we're here to talk about kinda updates here. Uh, I'll go through some of those numbers for the people that can't read it on the screen here. But there's been a lot of updates in the last year or so with the USDA project. And, um, that included a bunch of different categories of project needs. And, um, we're here to talk about the water side, the sewer side, and also the streetscape side for the downtown infrastructure. Uh, we'll also get into future capital improvement projects and, um, a bond issuance that's needed to finish out the current project that's underway. If you recall, so last year, the city closed on USDA funding for water and sewer. Um, USDA only covers the water and sewer portions of the project. They do not cover the streetscape part. So this is a big downtown project to cover a lot of different pipes, um, and assets on the water sewer side. But then there was a number of different discussions with the commission, with administration, with USDA, with, uh, Mike Schwartz and, um, Jason Washler from Prine Newhoff as the consultant engineers. To get to what was going to be done as a whole in the downtown. And then ultimately it was pared down and then pared down again and pared down again to what absolutely had to be done with, um, the funding from the general fund side. So one of the big pinch points that the city currently has is general fund funding. And one of the issues that you can run into is that you do these big projects to try to get everything taken care of. But USDA funding, which is a low interest loan for your community, only takes care of the water and sewer aspects. You have roads that they don't fund. You have sidewalks that they don't fund and other, um, assets in the downtown infrastructure that need to be taken care of. And they don't give you the money to do that. So ultimately, the consulting engineer goes and tries to shop out grants to get that. So you got a couple of grants that we'll talk about here to cover part of it. But there is a gap and, um, we need to figure out how to fund that and to complete the project. So, uh, we'll, we'll talk about the solution tonight and some of the things that the, the commission is gonna have to consider for the next budget twenty-five, twenty-six. And, um, but first we're gonna concentrate on water and sewer and kinda the same discussions we've been having for a number of years now. So, um, feel free if you have any questions, if this is.
Yeah, let's start from the very beginning.
Okay.
When did this actually start? Was this clear back? What year was this?
The project itself?
Yes.
The project itself started last year.
No, 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 no.
Oh, the, the design?
When it originally started with Heather Grace. It went way back.
It was before that.
Are we talking twenty-twenty?
No, it was two thousand and eighteen, cause you guys.
Yeah.
It started before.
Wasn't while I was in office.
Yeah, so the, we came into the city in like sixteen-ish. This project has been talked about at that, like from that time on. This has been on the, the city's capital improvement plan. What's actually happening?
Okay.
Was part of the Saw Grant. Um, so the Saw Grant was, was in like sixteen to eighteen, somewhere in that timeframe. It was, it was over a number of years. But, um, this project was one of the high priority projects that was targeted in the Saw Grant. And that was for sewer only and a little bit of stormwater stuff, but mostly sewer. But then obviously it, it turned into sewer and water because when you dig it all up, you wanna fix every issue, not just the sewer part. Um, and then there is other, the oxidation ditch project was another big one that was a part of that, um, that capital improvement planning at that time. That was solved, uh, with the bonding in twenty-twenty. And then there's, um, the iron removal is another big one that's still, um, to be determined on what to do about that. That, um, the funding didn't line up in terms of getting grants and stuff this time around, so that's been put on hold. Um, and then there's other street water main, sewer main work that has to be done as well.
And that Saw Grant, for reference, is when they went through and basically scoped every single pipe and gave us, I mean, over multiple years. It just, it was just turned in when I got elected.
Yep.
So the first time.
Okay, I remember doing all the inspections.
Yeah, that was where it all started.
Talking hardly, I don't remember talking about any major actual start date, date project.
Yeah, that was your gap.
You know, I mean, we, we ran all, blew all the smoke through the pipes literally and did all the tracing and all that. And I know we were spending a lot of money doing that, but we weren't talking about the expenditure because we had the nine million dollar project in the sewer system. Where we had to start.
Yeah, and that oxidation ditch is.
And that's the reason why I bring it up is because this originally started as a thirty million dollar project too, correct? The front street project?
Somewhere around there. I don't know the exact amount, but it was, that sounds about right.
Okay. And the only reason why I'm bringing it up, I'm not trying to be facetious, but I mean, we have been playing with this for seven years. So now people are complaining about their water bills and I feel the same pain. And I was the one that initiated the eight percent because I didn't wanna raise it seventy-five percent. And then three years later, raise it fifty percent. And then this year, raise it another sixty percent. You know, I didn't wanna do multiple, you know, implementations to pay for this. Is there any indication whatsoever in your capacity that we're gonna be able to stop this eight percent increase in our water bills going forward? Or at least stop the eight percent increase in ready to serve in your capacity?
Not for the next three fiscal years, no.
For three years, okay.
Yeah, that was where we had. We had already said it.
Right, I'm just trying to get, I want.
For the public.
I'm getting a lot of heat because I, you know, DPW building and all that. And I mean, I really made that motion to go the eight percent. And I didn't think for a billion years that it was gonna be forever.
So some of the things that's happened, um, I'll, I'll tag on a little bit though. So one of the major issues that the city got caught in, um, originally, and I don't, it, this is not to point fingers at anybody. I mean, there's, but just, just a matter of fact is that, um, the Saw Grant was, I believe your community was ninety percent grant. It was either ninety or a hundred. I think you're a ninety percent grant community. Um, remember, it doesn't uncover things that, to fix that weren't needed to be fixed. It just makes you aware of those things earlier before they break.
Right.
But, um, essentially Michigan as a whole was very bad at maintaining and improving infrastructure because the money was not there. Um, Michigan did not do a lot of grants. They didn't do a lot of infrastructure. There, uh, there wasn't a lot of asset management push. There wasn't anything until this Saw Grant. So Buchanan and, um, I think there was like two hundred and fifty or so communities that did Saw Grants. Many of those communities got caught in the same thing that once those camp, the cambering, the smoke testing, everything went through. Everybody realized that, that there's been so much deferred maintenance in the state of Michigan that you now have to actually fix this stuff. And that's what we're dealing with right now is that it, again, it doesn't mean that the, it's uncovering problems that unnecessarily. It just means that you're now finding the problems earlier before they become bigger problems.
And it's just telling the communities that the infrastructure we have is old and broke down.
If the community goes back and look, correct me if I'm wrong, it was the maps that were generated at that time. They were red, green and yellow, right? And the red was the downtown. And that's, people ask, why are we doing downtown? That is the oldest and most susceptible to potential break.
The main artery, right? Everything flows from there out or into there from the sewer system.
Yeah, so I don't know. I, it, it's, there's like consequence of failure. There's criticality. Those are like cement. So you have, um, your downtown is a bigger impact on the city if it fails versus like a dead end street out on the outside of town. So those are always very important. If they're, if it's in bad shape, you gotta, you gotta fix it. You gotta maintain it. Because it, it affects so much of your customer base and to get, um, to transport water or transport sewage to the plant. So that's one of the projects that was targeted from the start of, uh, starting to figure out the capital improvement plan, which was, again, sometime in like seventeen, eighteen, when this was all starting to be put together. Um, since that time, there's been a couple of things that are outside of your guys' control that have happened. Um, the, the project's been talked about a long time. There's been grants. We've been trying to figure out grants. This is mostly from the engineering side. Engineers typically go after the grants for, on behalf of the community, uh, with the help of administration. But since then, um, inflation's gone up a lot. So you guys are dealing with a lot of inflation, just like everybody else's, and construction costs have skyrocketed. So, um, that's one of the big issues that I know Prine Newhoff and, um, management, along with us on the financial side, have talked about a lot. Is that the project has been pared back because of the amount of increased on construction costs.
Well, didn't inflation come from Flint though, too, the mandate? Now everybody knows they gotta fix it. So in, costs are gonna increase because your community, your contractors know that they've got, we've got to do it. Is there some of that too?
Um, I would say, yes, there, the two degree, I don't know what degree. Because there, as of right now, you still have, um, the, the EPA just accelerated this slightly. But at one point, the state of Michigan put the, the final date to comply with lead and copper rule as twenty forty-one. You had to meet different markers like every five or so years, but you had ultimately like twenty years to comply. The EPA just accelerated it. I believe it's now twenty thirty-seven. Um, so they accelerated a little bit. But it, it wasn't like that this, all these contractors are now getting all this work all at once because you still have a number of years to comply with this rule. However, um, the, I will say it's, it's that, but it's also from what we're seeing on project side. That contractors, there's a lot less contractors from just from COVID and stuff that the contractors went out of business or something. Just, um, whatever happened. There's less bids. And the fact that there's a lot bigger projects now that there is an, an infrastructure push on the national level. Um, that a lot of the bigger contractors are not bidding on like a Buchanan project because they're bidding on state or federal projects. So the ones that are bidding on local projects, they know that they can bid premium pricing.
Okay.
Because they're competing with less firms. So.
Just wanted to know. I just wanted you to bring it up, cause I want it on public record, you know?
Absolutely.
Good question.
Because the general public just doesn't comprehend what we're doing out here. I mean, we're raising their water prices just because we're a bunch of jerks sitting up here. Oh, we're gonna throw eight percent at you every year.
No, they're, so, um, no, um, yeah, I hope it, it doesn't, I mean, we work for about, I, I personally work for about a two hundred and fifty communities in the state. We run utility rates for about a hundred of them. Everybody's dealing with this. It's not Buchanan.
Thank you for that.
You have a lot of inflation concerns, construction concerns, compliance concerns. Eagles constantly changing their directives, uh, that, that is costing everybody money. Um, I, I don't necessarily disagree with some of it. I will also be on the record of saying compliance and being, not polluting the air, the waterways is good. But it is difficult at times to keep up with.
They worry about killing trout.
Sorry?
They worry about killing trout. Dropping a rock in the river during breeding season, the fish are gonna die.
So Andy, I. You covered a lot of water and sewer, so in an effort to keep this thing moving, some good questions. Um, the project we're talking about, the bond that you're talking about today, right, we're not dealing with any enterprise funding with that. This, we're looking at outside funding.
A little bit of time to the water. Yeah, so let's, yeah, so let's talk about the, the CIP for the water. So the, the water and sewer increases, and we are recommending eight percent on all rates for that, all user rates. That's your ready to serve plus commodity for both water and sewer for the next three fiscal years. The hope is, I mean, theoretically, and I always hesitate saying this, but, cause I've, that, but you can't raise rates eight percent forevermore.
Right.
Because you're going to raise your revenues so much and your expenses are not gonna keep up, hopefully. But the problem is, is that you do have a lot of capital improvements that you still have to go. We don't know what's gonna happen with construction prices. You don't know what happens with inflation. But theoretically, the hope has always been for this city that it will level off at some point, but you have not reached it yet. Um, construction prices and inflation have delayed that essentially. The hope was that it would already start to curtail off by this time, but we're, we're seeing too much in the construction price in, increases especially to, uh, be able to recommend anything lower.
On a positive note, if we hadn't done eight percent, we'd be in a real pickle right now though, right?
So the, the issue that you, you face a lot of communities is like, you have, this is stuff that you, you cannot avoid. So you as a community have to make one of two choices. Either you do inflationary increases or a little bit higher than inflationary increases, kind of eight percent. Or you have to jump rates every so often. You have to do a twenty percent, a thirty percent, a fifty percent rate increase every couple of years. That's been the decision of multiple commissions and multiple administration is to try to avoid that. It's to try to keep it to at least manageable increases. I, you can argue with me whether or not it's manageable for, I get that on, in terms of budgeting, it's difficult. But our argument as financial advisor is it's easier to budget a little bit every year than be hit with like a fifty percent increase every few years. So that's what we're trying to do, but.
It's a lot easier sitting in this chair too.
Yeah, so.
We're not reapproving anything, right? Cause we approved rate increases two years ago. That covers this period.
So, yeah, so, so the water sewer side, we're just kinda giving a review of like why, as, since we're here, just that this is our recommendation and kind of codifying that. And, um, but talking through like the water side, the project that you're currently doing in USDA has been part of the analysis for a number of years. And it's currently in the rate structure that you have. So the, what's going on with like all the water improvements and everything is not going to necessitate a further increase from what you're doing on the eight percents. Same thing on sewer. As long as you don't have mul, like a massive change in what you're doing. The project for, that you borrowed the money for USDA and the sewer side is already built into the analysis. It's included in the eight percent recommendations. You can see on here though, this is, um, an important point for, I, I kinda brought this up very preliminarily in my opening discussion. The, um, iron removal treatment plant has been put on hold. That was originally part of this project. But due to costs and funding and not getting grants, it's been put on hold. So this is another reason of why the eight percent increases our need is, is because at some point we're going to have to address that. You hope that grants come, but, um, as of right now, they're not there. We don't know what's gonna happen with the new administration federally and potentially state in a couple of years with the, with the new governor coming in, no matter what happens in twenty twenty-six. Um, but as of right now, we need to, as a city, at least plan for the continued improvement on what's necessary on the water, uh, infrastructure. And develop plans and try to go after grants and funding for the iron removal pro, iron removal plant. So that is, um, built in here. That's on the capital improvement plan for water. Uh, as I've talked about a number of times, we are recommending the eight percent increases for the next few fiscal years. Um, the hope is that it levels off at some point, but I, I can tell you there, it is a strong recommendation that for the next three fiscal years, it will be eight percent. From our recommendation. That's obviously has to be approved by the commission and administration, uh, with their input. But for the next three fiscal years, I, it will be our recommendation to stay at the eight percent. Um, just by what we're seeing in terms of the financials and knowing, um, what's happened with the budget and the, the costs, construction costs, everything. So, um, again, I'm gonna go through some of this. I, I need to get to the general fund side. But if you have any questions, please stop me. But this kinda goes through the impact to a typical homeowner. We always try to give, um, both the people in this audience and just anybody that looks at this, what does this mean to a typical homeowner? Every homeowner is different. I have to give the qualification. It depends on how much water you use. But currently for the water portion of the bill, just the water portion, we'll talk about sewer in a second. That homeowner's bill is forty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. The increase for twenty-five, twenty-six, um, it's a little less than four dollars per month. So it's about three seventy-five per month for, on the monthly bill increase. Sewer fund, so, um, same type of thing. The, our understanding in this, and this relies a lot, um, at least preliminarily on like the, the engineers' recommendation of current capital improvement plans. But you've actually bitten off a lot of the sewer fund needs in the past few years. Now, there is still more. There, you can see there's still stuff, uh, like sewer line replacements and a couple of other projects that are needed on the sewer fund. Um, but we've addressed a lot of the, the, like the downtown infrastructure and the, the oxidation ditch project, which were two of the major things that were found and saw to, um, improve immediately that were needed. So sewer funds bitten off a lot of projects. It still needs, um, the rate increases though. The sewer fund is not in as good of a position cash flow wise, and it needs that just to keep up with cash flow. Um, and there's other capital improvements coming down the line. On the sewer side, I know that this has been the major heartache for a lot of the bills. So the, the bill is, is dominated by the sewer side of the bill. So if you're on both water and sewer, um, and you see a combined bill. It's a, it's like, what is it? Maybe, what's that? About three fifths or so, maybe more than that, um, related to sewer. So there's, the typical homeowner for sewer is seventy-seven ninety-six per month. Um, it would go up about six dollars and twenty-five cents for the monthly bill. So you're talking about a ten dollar increase overall to your typical homeowner. And that is assuming that they use four thousand gallons. So it depends on how much you use, but the increase to the typical homeowner with those increases would be about ten dollars. Now, this is the, the, the main reason why we're here tonight is the other portion of this project. And, uh, there's been a lot of discussion, uh, since our transition and, um, since Tony came on, on trying to figure out how to get the other portion of the project funded. So this gives you kind of a breakdown of what the other portion is. Um, this includes, the, at, at one point, it was a bunch of random things and then it got scaled down to basically the necessities of like sidewalks. As I talked about sidewalks, roads that, that can't be funded with water sewer. Um, I think there's a little bit of storm work in there. Um, I think those are the major ones, but, uh, street light, uh, that's being funded by the grant. But the, there's a number of different projects in this that you cannot pay out of water sewer because they're not related to water sewer. USDA does not fund them, so what do you do? So we, we've talked about this at a number of different time, um, times with administration about trying to figure out what to do here. So the scaled back project need is per Prine Newhoff. Um, this is their engineer's current estimate of the, the need for the project was two million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, three twenty-two. You're getting a BARR grant. I honestly don't know what that stands for. Um, but that is a grant for a hundred and eighty-four thousand. I think that's the street light, but I could be off. I don't remember putting you on the spot here. I don't know if that's the streetlight one or not. But there's an M dot grant, um, on top of that, which is seven hundred and eighteen, one fifty-six. So the gap is a little over two million. What we've talked about is to contribute some general fund money to knock it down to a one point five million dollar bond. So, um, this has been talked about a lot with like Deb as finance director and then obviously Tony and Tim, um, as management side. About, there's two different things you have to be careful of when you talk about general fund funding. You have, you, the best case scenario is that you got the cash and you can just pay for it in cash. The issue that you have, that you run into as a community of your size, that general fund. The issue that you have, that you run into as a community of your size, that general fund is not something that, um, a lot of it is outside of your control on the revenue sources. What you have to be extremely careful about is taxable value. So, without going on my soapbox about proposal A and Headley, uh, double whammies. If taxable value goes down, so if we hit another recession, arguments of whether or not that could happen in the next ten years. You have no control about where the floor goes on your taxable value, which thus affects the taxes you receive. There is no floor, so what happened to, to the city Buchanan in the recession, taxable value takes a dive. You now can only go up by inflation every year, so you take a dive to unknown, and then it just goes up by inflation every year, and then you eventually get back to where you were before. That means they had to cut like city services staff, it's stuff that you can't not do because you, you can't control that side of it. On this portion, what we're trying to do is to make sure that you, in, with the best estimates possible, that you do not have to do that. So with what we're recommending tonight is that you spend a little bit of general fund cash, but you don't blow all your reserves in case something happens with those reserve, uh, the revenues. Um, right now, you do have like marijuana revenue that comes into general fund, you have taxable value, like your taxes, you have state revenue sharing. Those things are not really in your control a lot of times about like what happens with those on a year to year basis. So, you don't wanna spend all your money and then get, run into a problem and have to cut services. So, one of the main things that was talked about is like trying to make sure that the city can still do and offer the same services and get this project funded, so not having to cut services was a big thing. So, contribute a little bit of cash, but not run it too tight. The next thing you have to worry about is if you're gonna get into bonding with the general fund, that obviously now puts a bond payment on the general fund in, in terms of budget. So do you have the budget to pay for that? So if you do one point five million, we looked at different term options. Um, this is kind of still under, up for discussion, like right now, we're leaning to a fifteen year bank R F P, and I can tell you why. But, um, we, we talked about, I mean, uh, these are five year terms, but you could do a fourteen year, you could do a seventeen year, it's, it's up to you. And, and obviously with our help of figuring out that out. But you can see, the fees are the same, it really goes down to the bottom of how much can you afford to pay? Um, obviously, the shorter the term, the better the interest rate. But the issue that we see as a group altogether is that, um, I, I don't think a ten year is attainable for the general fund. It's gonna run you too tight in terms of the yearly budget, not your cash reserves, but now you're looking at the yearly budget going forward. So right now, we're looking at a fifteen year, and the fact that you, if with a change, there is going to need to be a change that we'll talk about, that you can afford the fifteen year payment at an estimate of a hundred forty five thousand per year. I'll get back to that, but I do wanna kinda talk about this, because the general fund again, you, there's a lot of things you have to worry about in terms of the general fund. There's a lot of people, there's a lot of services, there's a lot of projects that are paid out of the general fund. And the goal of all these discussions, and, and I will say, this is, um, one of the more in-depth discussions I've ever had about general fund because we as financial advisors wanna make sure that we, everything possible, we put you in the best position of like telling you, this is what we think is realistic. And then, um, turn it over to the commission administration to say, yes, we agree with you. But there's only so much you can do. So I have to qualify it and say, if some, if we have a bad recession, things have to change again. But with where we are as a group in terms of administration and us coming together of saying, we think a fifteen year is the right approach to fund the gap. The main thing that we need to talk about is the transfer, which I'll talk about in a second. But this does affect a lot of different areas of the city, so I wanted to kinda talk about this aspect of it. The general fund again pays for a lot of different departments, um, out of tax money, the police department, the fire department. Um, you'll see on there that there's the potential for a new fire police complex. I will say, this is why capital improvement plan is done. It's not that you're going to do that project, it says, just that you have identified a need. So, finding grants, finding funding, um, maybe doing it in five years might be the right approach, maybe doing it in ten years, fifteen years. That, that is not something that is being thought about tomorrow. It's just that this is, you're thinking about this as a city of saying, this is a potential project that, and a potential need for the city. How we fund it and how we pay for it is still up for discussion, and when we do it is still up for discussion. But this is a huge aspect of general fund planning. This is the same thing that happened on water sewer with the Saw Grant and the oxidation ditch project and the downtown infrastructure project. This is out there to basically say like, we might need to do this, how do we do it? Um, so we're gonna try to figure out a way, first off, to not affect ci- city services and give the, the taxpayers the same services. Uh, what we did here was to put together, this is essentially the, the current, the cash flow of the general fund if we didn't make any changes to anything. And you'll see the, the note that we have to put together, um, at the very bottom to say that this is unrealistic and is shown for demonstrated purposes because we cannot do this. So we cannot say, um, one of the things that we talked about very early on is like the gap in the funding. To go back to that was one point nine million. So, two million, excuse me, the gap funding needed was two million dollars. And we have approximately two million dollars in the general fund right now. You can't just like spend all your money and say, let's just fund it and be done, because now you have no money to do operations of the city. And that's includes police, fire, general, everything, administration. You can't run it to zero and have no money. So, the next thing we looked at was like, do you bond at all? Do you bond it two million dollars and pay it off over five years or ten years? Well, if you do that, now you can't afford the yearly payments, and you're running your general fund down too much, and you don't have a balanced budget. So now you have to look at, how do you weigh those two things? And again, the recommendation was to contribute about five hundred thousand in cash, you've already paid for some of that. Um, so it was an additional two hundred thousand or so in cash, and then bond fund the one point five million. The major change that is needed is that there is currently a transfer out of the general fund for, it's four point some mills to the streets, um, to pay for ongoing street work. It's approximately, um, I had this number in my head, it was, it was approximately four hundred and sixty one thousand, this budget. Um, if we do not do that transfer, that is a voluntary transfer that was put in by the commission. Um, if we do not do that transfer, that solves this issue. So, all of this can work if we do not do that transfer. You can kinda see that right here, we have to make a change to this, this approach of we, I mean, we spent a lot of time, and I will say, we as in mostly Deb and Tony and Tim, with a little bit of my help, this wasn't all me. Spent a lot of time dissecting the general fund revenues, dissecting the general fund expenses, trying to figure out how to forecast each one of those out in a realistic way. And this is what kinda came out of that, to say, we need to make a change if we're gonna do this gap. Um, this includes the fifteen year, so this includes like the fifteen year, uh, one point five million dollar bond issue, but it's not attainable unless you make a change. So if we took out the transfer and we left the transfer in the general fund and said, hey, we're, we're gonna, for the time being, we're, we're not gonna do this transfer out of the general fund of the streets. Then it cash flows. So, that's the, the recommendation, I s- I will say from us as well, is to, um, take the transfer out and repurpose the transfer money to finish out the downtown project. I will say from, from my point of view, um, it, again, like it, and I think administration, please chime in if I'm off here, but like the not impacting city services was a big thing, so not trying to cut services to try to get this done was, was priority number one. But then also thinking this through of saying, okay, we're, we're not gonna be able to transfer the money to the streets, but we're also doing streets and other downtown infrastructure with this money. So it's not necessarily that we're just taking the transfer and just using it for some completely unrelated thing. We're gonna take that money that was gonna be transferred and use it for the downtown project that is related to streets, it's related to the downtown infrastructure project. And that will make it all cash flow, as long as you don't have a recession, so gotta qualify.
I got one question before we go any further, I'm showing my ignorance. Can you pay these bonds off early? Say, somebody writes us a check for a million and a half dollars? I mean, I know people in high places, I know people in low places. You never know when they might write me a check for a million and a half bucks, and I decide to give it to the city. Can you do that?
I have the same question, Dan, if we structured our bond agreements to be five years instead of a typical ten year, is that?
Yeah, so typically, you're gonna do a ten year call, which, so a fifteen year bond, the first ten years, you can only make your scheduled payments.
Okay.
But I will say, in this route, going to banks, um, seven years is, is gonna be very doable. Five, we're gonna have to take, kinda see. It, you're kinda pushing it a little bit, because banks obviously don't wanna do all this work and, um, and then have you pay them off early without gaining something from it, they're investing. But you can easily do this down to seven. If we need to go lower than that, we can talk, but.
But we can put our money in our general fund, you know, I mean, and just keep our, I don't wanna get too deep into it, but it's still there. And we can pay the bond off early.
I, I would like.
Not real early, but we can still pay it off early.
I, I would like to see us have like a five year, especially where we, I think, all see rates going, maybe not in the next year, but especially two years out, that downward forecast.
Okay.
We're at a flat yield curve right now, so.
Yeah, that's good feedback, we will do the, the analysis on that and see, um, if, what the impact is, and making sure that we get bids is important, but, yeah.
Well, it doesn't fit into the budget though either, if you do a five year.
No, we're saying the call, so like, just like, so we can take it back and refinance it, but we can't before then.
Yep.
I mean, there's, there's ways, I mean, I'm writing letters all the time and sending emails and making phone calls all the time, you never know. Man, I might fall from the sky.
I think the oxidation ditch has a ten year call on it.
It does.
But that's, it was done in a low rate environment, so.
Right.
Right.
We have the average, right.
Two point nine two, I think, something, and so that call dates like twenty thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's good to know, because I had no idea whatsoever.
That's a good question.
I know mortgages, you have penalties for paying them off early, but I didn't know anything about bonds.
It, it is actually, I'm glad, I, I honestly wasn't gonna talk about this, but I'm, I'm glad that you bring it up because it jogged my memory on, um. You should still, as a community, so if anybody in here is not happy with the rate increases, um, and not happy with like the fact that we need to borrow money and stuff, um, many communities in the state are still going after earmarks, many communities in the state are still getting earmarks. Um, I don't know what's happening a lot right now with the changeover in leadership with the state. But you still need to talk to your representatives and see if you can get them to fund this. It, it's not, um, it's not a foregone conclusion that they will not give you the money. I mean, you should still be, and, and I will say, on top of that, um, the iron removal plant needs to be priority number two. So, asking for money to complete the downtown infrastructure project and paying off the bonds early. There's a lot of times these earmarks don't have strings attached to them too much.
Well, they're keeping more and more of our money all the time.
Right.
And that's documented. It's not just the Democrats, it's the Republicans too, so I'm not trying to pick on any one party. But it's, it's less and less money that we're sending up there that's coming back to us. And they, she's not fixing our roads, so I will point my finger at her.
And for the community, w- last I knew, we were still in the final stages of earmarks with Walburg. We just don't know when that decision will get made, which would be a sizable amount of dollars.
Yep. Keep trying, as a community, write letters. It's, um, it doesn't, that side of it does not have anything to do with certain types of communities, certain median household income, certain demographics. It's all about convincing the right people to give you money.
And that's something all these people can do, and that's part of the reason why.
Every single community should try, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Andy.
Uh, so just to wrap up, like these decisions will more come with your budget for twenty five, twenty six. But, um, please, if there's any questions or comments, please filter them through, like through Tony or, um, the team. I'm just trying to see how we can help you make these decisions. But, uh, we are hoping to get the process started relatively quickly to make sure that you do have the funding in place to commit to, commit, um, completing the downtown project, so.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Andy.
All right. Yep, thank you, everybody.
Good to see you.
Yes.
You too.
Very informative.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, uh, at this time, we'll move on to reports by department committees and boards. Buchanan City Police Department, annual twenty twenty four, Chief Harvey Barnett.
Good evening. You have been given a written document of the annual report that was for your cruising and for the public. Uh, the annual report, we went to a more written document, um, which a lot of agencies do, uh, for transparency and things like that. So it will be on our website, it should be on our, uh, city's website under the police department. And I'm just here if you have any questions, uh, to ask about the report.
Questions? No, I always appreciate the annual report, especially just all the stuff we're doing in the community as a police force. I, I know as other communities that are stressed for dollars and cents, just like we are today. How we show that additional value outside of just being present is tougher and tougher to do, and the way your group puts that together. It, it means a lot to the community, from Dare to National Night Out to Shop With The Cotton, and the list goes on and on. So, appreciate the presence and, and creating that environment for our community.
And I continue to say it every time, thank you for everything you guys do, just as Patrick just said, I think that, you know, you guys are part of the community. I know a lot of communities can't say that, you know, I don't, I think you're, you have a favorable position in the city, the way that you're treated, the way that the people view you as, as part of the community, not just somebody out there with batons and taking, taking people out, you know, and, or whatever happens in other cities, it's not my concern, but. Um, and then annual report, I highly recommend everybody take it a moment to read it, the community, and, and really see how much effort you guys put in outside of just patrolling the streets and, and doing what you do to, to keep the community safe, because, um, it's a walkable city because of the team that you've put together, so I appreciate that.
We try to keep it as a, a community oriented policing strategy and vision, where we build partnerships with the community.
That's what makes it good, so. Thank you, Harvey.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, at this time, Community Development Director, Richard Murphy.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Evening, everybody, Rich Murphy, Community Development Director, a few items for you this evening. Uh, first of all, um, we've done this before, uh, we have a, uh, a business who's applying for a liquor license at the state level. And, um, there's a required local government approval form. Um, actually, we've done this several times, it's kind of the blessing of the local government on the application. Uh, so we have this for, uh, B and W Poor Decisions, um, at one sixteen Main Street. B and W, uh, Tavern, um, has a new owner, and, uh, the owners are here this evening. I just wanted to introduce them briefly, have them come up and just introduce themselves. Uh, but Jennifer and Michelle, uh, are the new proud owners of the B and W, and, uh, they have a vision to, uh, get our watering hole back, so.
Thank you for having us tonight, I'm Jennifer, this is Michelle. Um, B and W could open its doors tomorrow because it was left intact. So, when we walked in, we knew we needed to bring life back to it, and this is one of the steps needed in order for us to move forward so that we can bring it back to life.
Well, thank you so much, I mean, we, I can imagine that you guys have seen everything that goes on on Facebook, you're, it's obvious, you're the ones that, that communicate out with the, the community and the outpouring of appreciation for what you guys are doing, and, and you can see the importance of, of that facility and what it means to the community is well, something that seems to be second to none, I think that Palucci, Joe Palucci understood that, and what he did in bringing back the sweet shop was phenomenal, so. Uh, they're very, the community is wonderful, and they, they love things to be the way they are, and it's great because they're doing it for good reasons. So thank you for doing that, and I don't have any concern over this being approved, and looking forward to it being open.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a motion.
Thanks, Mayor, there, there's two, there's two, uh, actions that are required. Uh, one is, uh, the local government approval for the Form one oh six, which is the Class C license for, uh, M C L redevelopment statute. So this is, again, a redevelopment liquor license. Uh, we can go, uh, this path by virtue of the level of investment that's made in Buchanan, uh, over the past three years. So it's a great redevelopment tool, um, it's, you're probably gonna see more applications come forward because we've opened this tool up and we have secured licenses from the state, so.
Wonderful.
Uh, the second one is the social district local government approval, and so we just need actions on both those forms.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, at this time, I'll take a motion for the new Class C license.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dot zero two dash zero four as presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Swam?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
And Viancy.
Yes.
I just have one question before we go on to that.
Absolutely.
What's the timeline on this?
Well, we're, I think we, our first application took a long time, the second one took less time. So I think the state's accelerating their approval process. Um, this license is, it's, not everybody has this tool, so it's kind of a unique tool for B for Buchanan to have. Uh, but I'd say, you know, a few months, hopefully, we'll see.
Are they gonna open before they get their license, or are they gonna wait?
They they can't open before they get their license.
You can't?
No, there's great state of Michigan BS.
Yeah, from the city, what we can do is, we can approve these two things, and then it's, it's all up to the state.
Alright, sorry. It's the state of Michigan.
You good?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, and then I'll take a motion for the social district application for B and W poor decision.
I'll move to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dot zero two dash oh five as presented.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Roll call, please.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Viancy?
Yes.
And Swam?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can we have a message about phones in here, and just keep hearing them go off the whole meeting?
Yeah, if we could silence your phones uh, during the meetings, that would be wonderful, thank you.
Okay, uh, next item I have, uh, you'll remember Red Bud Roots does their renewals in two cycles. Uh, this is their uh, first cycle in February, uh, they have five licenses up for renewal, um, a Class C grow, um, adult use, Class C grow, adult use, uh, two fifteen post road, eight thirty five Terracoup Road, then there's a Class C grow at eight thirty five, uh, adult use, we have a processor license uh, at two fifteen post adult use, and uh, a processor post, a processor license for medical at two fifteen post. I've received all the applications, uh, they have been completed correctly, uh, we have received all fees as of today. Um, we have uh, sent the backgrounds to Buchanan Police Department uh, for um, to do the required annual back background checks that have come back uh, to our satisfaction. And I believe uh, there's a gentleman, Dave Murray, is it?
Yes.
From Red Bud Roots here uh, this evening, if you have any questions, uh, but my recommendation is to uh, uh, renew these licenses uh, and approve them for twenty twenty five.
Very good. Thank you, Rich. Um, at this time, I'll take a motion.
I just have one question for you, Dave. In today's environment, what's the, why would a pro, why would anybody apply for medical going forward still, just so we can plan budget wise?
Yeah, so uh, it's about one percent of the overall market, but there is still a need there. A lot of the products that we've been using for medical, we actually just transfer it and give away to to uh, patients. Uh, but in order to do that legally, we have to have a medical license to transfer it to. Um, so we we actually don't make any money on the medical license, but it's a way for us to get back to Buchanan patients uh, in a legal fashion.
I appreciate you clarifying that, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Okay.
I'll move to approve the annual marijuana license renewals for Red Bud Roots as presented.
Very good. Do we have a second?
I'll second. I have one question too.
Absolutely.
Um, thanks for staying away from Laura. You know, I watch it pretty close. And there's some pretty good guys out here. Hope you got a fairly decent relationship with Harvey. Um, I drive by, I don't never come in too much, but I've talked to some of your help, and thank you for being part of the community for five years, six years now.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Whedon?
Yes.
Viancy?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next, we have another local government approval form, similar to the last one we ju- just did. This time, uh, this is for a off premises tasting room license and permit at two oh one East Front Street. Um, we have a business owner who's here this evening, Sidney, um, that has a vision for that building, uh, that cool uh, little bank, old bank building on the corner, so you just wanna?
Sure. You wish yourself? Yeah, hello, I'm Sidney. My husband Max and I own Stranger Wine Company together, he had to leave with our two-year-old, I apologize about the disruptions there. Um, but we have Stranger Wine Company out on Madron Lake Road, we have a fifteen acre vineyard that we farm together. We do make wine and sell and distribute throughout Michigan and markets like Chicago, but we really would love to have an opportunity to bring people to Buchanan and showcase our wine for them in the beautiful town that we have, so. Let me know if you have any questions.
I don't think questions, I think excitement. I don't know about you guys, but you guys, and then you got, so I mean.
I wanna thank your two-year-old, because usually I'm the distraction, so.
She will always stand in in that role when you need.
Well, you can bring her anytime then, because we.
They escort me out pretty regularly.
Not, not this session, we've been pretty good.
Alright, well, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck to you, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, any other questions?
Really, it's more of one for Rich. Should we a- approve this resolution to include the social district that they checked off?
Well, you know, I I brought that up and I had discussed it with Sidney, and she does plan to, uh, and it actually has requested uh, the app, has completed the application for social district. I didn't want to complicate things and change the agenda, however, it's a very simple form. If you guys are so inclined to give her the approval, we'll save her from coming back.
Yeah, I think we should.
I, yeah, we can just do that in two sections, you know.
I don't think she'd need to come back if we did it anyhow.
Right. I would.
I would rather, you know, I mean.
I would say because you've already approved your agenda.
The agenda, right, I don't wanna.
It's not on there, so.
No, right.
I get it.
I would just put it on next round and don't worry about it.
Yeah, we'll just do it next month.
It's just paperwork anyhow.
Yeah.
Yep, we're good. Did you hear that, Dan?
We can do it that way, yeah, yeah.
We're winning hearts, man, hearts and minds.
Does it have to be a completely separate resolution, though?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just a state form.
It does have to be a separate resolution, okay.
That's okay.
It's like a state form, one pager.
Well, darn.
It's just like we did.
Caught that at the beginning.
It's just like we did for B and W.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, no, I understand.
I'll move to approve Resolution twenty twenty five oh two oh six as presented.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Viancy?
Yes.
Swam?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
And Whedon?
Yes.
Carries.
Very good.
Okay, uh, just quickly, I wanted to give you guys a brief update on the zoning project update. Uh, as Dan knows, the Plan Commission has renewed its focus on the zoning update. Uh, we have presented a timeline that we've shared with you. Uh, we have momentum. Uh, at January's meeting, we uh, came to a consensus on the redevelopment ready uh, measures that need to appear in the zoning, in the new zoning code. Um, tomorrow, we're meeting again, uh, where we plan to uh, re- review the entire project timeline, uh, as well as have a discussion about PUDs versus neighborhood plans and the zoning map itself, so. Uh, I'm just keeping you guys, this is like an FYI, because as you know, the way uh, the statute works is the Plan Commission propos- uh, approves the zoning, the new zoning document, but then it has to come before the commission for ratification, so it's a two-stroke cycle there, and uh, so we want it, as as we progress down the timeline, we want to keep you guys in a prize.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Uh, just a couple updates, uh, I gave flyers out tonight, but we do have a a public meeting on March third at six PM at City Hall for the downtown project. This is important, um, because we might see uh, construction activity downtown as soon as mid-March, so we're really trying to get ahead of this.
No, we're not gonna have any construction downtown mid-March.
He's talking about having the meeting over here, but that construction begins.
Yeah, but I thought I heard him say we're gonna have construction downtown.
You, you're thinking downtown by March?
No, there, there's trees that need to be cut by April first according to uh, the Indiana Bat Law. Uh, so I, I've just, we're, we're trying to get ahead of this and be careful, um, so that we are.
Yeah, but the, the reason why I corrected you or jumped so quick on that, Rich, I don't want the rumor to get out there that we're gonna start turning up the road in March, because we're not.
Yeah, that's a good point, thank you, yeah.
I mean, cutting trees down, we cut a, you know, I mean, I just don't want to go there.
We live in a world where the, the book of faces will, will get rounded up real quick, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't mean to jump, but it, you know, I'm dealing with it pretty good, and I don't want to scare the.
Yeah, it gets a little out of control online, you.
You know, this is a public meeting, we're gonna have the engineers, the contractors will be there, the city team all in one room. We're gonna share what we know, we're not gonna have answers to everything, but we're gonna begin the conversation uh, of reviewing this project because we talked a lot about it um, a while ago, and now we have to review and and talk about it again.
Thank you for that, Dan, because it, it'll get out of here that the, the, it's burning it down next week or something, so.
I knew I heard it.
Yeah, no, you did, thank you for that.
Ding, 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 ding.
I mean, Dan may seem like an alarmist, but he's not, he's nothing compared to the keyboard cowboys out there, so.
My DS alarms went off, high alert.
Yeah, it gets a little wild and crazy, I mean, you think that the Wild Wild West is something to be seen, you should see that. Yeah, you have to put on the.
Sorry, I wasn't meaning, I didn't mean, you know, it just went off, that's what the alarms are.
Some people may think cutting down trees is is.
Well, we know that group, and they do a good job of maintaining those, so we'll be fine.
It's really out of township page, so that's really their problem, right?
Yeah, exactly. Oh, that's right, that is true. Sorry.
That's all I have.
Yeah, that's enough of that.
Alright. Uh, no unfinished business, at this time, we move on to new business, ordinance twenty twenty five dot zero two four four zero, consider the first reading of the ordinance for the fire prevention and protection.
I'll tee it up and then she can chime. Sorry, my first ordinance reading with you all, I'm not really uh, flow over here.
No worries.
Uh, what you have before you tonight is the Fire Prevention and Protection Ordinance, this is something that's been worked on for a while now over this year. Um, I've just kinda had it teed up for me to bring before you, this is the first of two things we're gonna bring before you. Uh, it's gonna be this for the first reading this evening, this is gonna be followed by a rental ordinance. Do they kinda tie together? Once those are both approved, then come back to you with a rate structure for both of them together. So before you tonight is is a uh, fire protection and prevention ordinance, just to, a lot of the fires we have are rental properties right now, structure fires, so this will make sure everything's inspected on a regular basis for life and safety measures.
Good, very good, and I think that's absolutely necessary, we've talked about it at other previous meetings, many cities throughout the state of Michigan do it, and I've experienced it in the city of Coloma, and it's, it's absolutely necessary, it ensures that the rental owners do their, do their due diligence to protect their rental um, residents, so I think it's great.
I was a little bit against this when it first come out, because I was worried about harassing the people that are trying to make a business, or trying to make a living, and not harass the slum lords that we have number of, um, and I just want to make sure, and we don't have code enforcement to speak of, I know your attitude about it, but I just want to reiterate, you know, I want to go after the problems. I don't want to go after the guy that's trying to make a living or trying to do something. I mean, if there's something blatantly out there, you know, but, I mean, I, I don't like regulations, but on the other hand, I if this is good, if it's used right.
You can call it, uh, let's call it controls, not restrictions or, because you gotta put controls around things to ensure.
Tomato, tomato.
Uh, you know, it's about language. Alright, uh, expenditures. I'm sorry, my apologies, we skipped too quickly. Uh, I'll take a motion on that.
I will move to improve the first reading ordinance, sorry.
I'll second.
Dan. I moved to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five point zero two slash four four zero as presented.
Very good, do we have support?
I thought she'd said it, that's all.
She, it didn't, she's.
I'm sorry, I second it.
I got it.
Training wheels. Alright, yeah, roll call, please. Thank you.
Swam?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
And Viancy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, now expenditures. Consider approving expenditures for February tenth, twenty twenty five in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Yeah, there was just a couple of things, um, we went over, basically, that's what it is. He's already on top of it, he's already telling me most of the time before it comes out of my mouth. Uh, the contract for cleaning, he's on it.
Oh, good, because that was my question too, so then we can talk afterwards.
Um, and that was, that was back payment, it wasn't just one off.
Oh, okay, good, I'm glad you caught.
And then, um, we talked about heating a building out at the cemetery, propane, I always bring that up. And it's a non-issue, um, moving forward.
Very good.
So I make the, if you want me to, I'll.
You can go right ahead.
Expenditures in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand dollars, two hundred nineteen, three hundred and four, thirty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Very good, do we have support?
For Kelly, screwed me.
I'll support.
Very good, roll call, please.
Swam?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
And Viancy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, very good. At this time, we have nothing on the communications, uh, we will take public comment for non-agenda items, please keep your comments to three minutes and approach the podium and state your name for the record. Okay, seeing nobody approached the podium, uh, city manager comments.
Just a few updates for y'all for this evening. Um, we got a grant this year for the ten shop theater redo the roof, Mike and I were over there today, looked at it, we're gonna put the RFP, get that on the street. Um, that grant has to be spent by September, so we're gonna have to coordinate their show schedule because of how their setup is upstairs and the roof to work through that, but Mike and I are working on that. Um, a few meetings this week, just for the general public, compensation committee's here at five o'clock tomorrow evening. Uh, planning commission is here at six o'clock tomorrow evening, and then the tree friends are here at six o'clock on Wednesday evening. So, if anybody's looking for something to do dinner, you can come join me here for meetings. As we all know, SMAC and Medic One are in some conversations for merging, just for the, the, you guys in the public. They're gonna have two public meetings on this coming up. The first one is February twenty seventh, four PM at the Marion County Health Department. Second one is gonna be March thirteenth, four PM at Orinoco Township, so um, anybody interested in medical service and how that all runs in the area with the ambulances, there'll be opportunity there. Rich talked about the March third meeting. Um, we're looking at a opportunity for text messages for ways to push out information to the public. Probably saw a thing online today, Facebook, we're just trying to get the public's feel on it. It's a very inexpensive thing, it's like eighty bucks a month to do, but we want to make sure there's enough interest before we spend that eighty dollars, so if that is something you're interested in the general public, please let us know, because that will help with our decision whether to put that in as a program. For those of you that have seen the rental rec outside, it's not moved in a few months, and we throw some money at it every now and then. We have money in the budget, we're hoping to pull the trigger on a new car here in the next week or so to replace that one. Something a little more reliable for a pool car that I don't want to push in McCoy Creek every time I see it, so.
You talking about the white police cars?
White police cars being generous on that one, for sure.
Thank you, Tony.
And then finally, you guys know I'll be on vacation next week, something that's been planned for a while now, but I work in two or three hours every morning, if you need anything, and available by phone during the daytime as well, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Viancy?
Really, not all, I mean, we really need to concentrate on getting rid of our real estate, we really need to concentrate on code enforcement. And I, you know, we've talked about it a lot, I've talked to Tony a lot about it. I'm not trying to send tickets out there and start raising a bunch of revenue, so don't start that. You know, we're gonna work out a plan where it's thirty, sixty, ninety day mornings, then you're gonna get your tickets. We're gonna clean up the town, there's a new sheriff in town, and he wants to clean it up. So, um, there, I'm sure there was something, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. George?
Yes, I would like to thank, I know he's not here, but uh, Andy for coming in and talking to us and giving us a better idea of what's actually going on. Um, and then I'm really excited about the new, the B and W opening, really excited for you guys, thank you for your interest in our town, and then, um, forgot her name. The lady that was back here with the daughter, um, Sidney, yes. Uh, also thanking them for their, even though they're not here, uh, their interest in our town, I think that it is a move forward and uh, less empty buildings, so going along with what Dan said with the code enforcement that I second everything he said, I don't want to, you know, bombard people with, you know, all these tickets and all this, but take care of what we have, right? And, um, so, yeah, thanking Tony for all his updates and his hard work, and just this commission and everyone down at City Hall, everyone that works in the city, I appreciate your hard work.
Alright, Mr. Swam?
Alright, um, fortunately, I won't be here to, on March third to attend the meeting, so best of luck, everybody, I'll do my, my best to communicate outside of that. Welcome, B and W Stranger Wine, happy to have you guys in the community. Really big appreciation going out to the planning team, planning commission and ordinance review, we've been talking about a lot of this stuff. Hell, fire ordinance, rental ordinance for, right after I elected the first time around, we were talking about implementing that and setting the groundwork, so nothing new there, but happy to see that we're finally pulling the trigger on making these things happen. And then, big topic conversation, right, water sewer rates, uh, Water Sewer Commission met, or Review Board met last, this past Monday. Um, we're having conversations about an updated headworks analysis. Nothing formal on that yet, but that just is a reiteration of, we're appropriating the right dollars to the enterprise fund and. and and making sure we're transparent and public about how how your billing is calculated, so. Weighs out on getting an updated analysis on that, but something the city looks to do every about five years to keep checks and balances in place and keep confidence in the billing. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Uh I'll second everything they said, I I I think we all well aware, we're pretty excited about that, so thank you. Uh on the code enforcement, as we start to push into this and we and Tony uh and and Dan have been speaking on it for years and it's something I also agree with wholeheartedly, uh but in the same breath, I want to ensure, and I'm gonna push this from my position, is that uh for individuals who can't meet the expectations of the code enforcement and and as they start to get into that thirty, sixty, ninety, uh you know, we have young men and women at the high school who I'm certain would be happy to to volunteer. Uh the Boy Scouts of America, as it's currently called, I'm not really sure what the new name is, it's not, I I don't know. But um we have a, we have an amazing group of people in this community that love to volunteer and do things to help people out. And if anybody gets onto TikTok that does still exist for now, uh there's amazing people out there who raise an unbelievable lot of money and do things for free and it just makes your heart full. I believe we have that same type of heart within the city of Buchanan, and I'm certain that the police and and DPW and everybody else would put in the effort for somebody who was not capable to to meet the expectations of code enforcement. And it does put some goodwill into the community and and gives them a a great feeling about the home they live in. So that's something that I will harp on as we start to see these come through and we push hard on code enforcement. Uh the other one is if you know people within the community who have received a letter to and they can scan that QR code or if they don't know what a QR code is, to have their water inspected by Craig, please make sure you you get them to do that. Um there's no pressure right now, but now we just got a new timeline of twenty thirty-seven. So let's ensure that they are aware of it, if you hear people talking about it, it's a very quick inspection. Um he looked at ours, it was two minutes, you're copper, you're good to go, so um please reiterate that for me. Uh that's all I have. I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
George?[1779.58]